We'll go ahead and the board is in recess, was in recess, and I'll bring us out of recess, where we will be discussing third and final consideration on an ordinance rezoning the following parcels located on the portions of Robbins Road, Coggin Road, Sutton Road, Castle Lane, Perring Ridge Road, Lindelweire Road, and Quality Ridge Road from agricultural to agricultural with a renewable energy overlay. And the parcels were published in the paper as well as on our website. So at the conclusion of our deliberations and decision, there will be time for public comment. For those who have attended these meetings regularly know that you have five minutes and if you would state your name and address for the record. So I think before we start, I'd invite Charlie Nichols, our Planning and Development Director, to give a quick overview on this project. And I'd also note for the listening and viewing public that we do have a participant, one of the principals of Coggin Solar LLC joining us via audiovisual.
All right, here we go. Thank you, Board. So to start off, I'd like to revisit where we are right now with the case conditions. So as it stands, in addition to the base conditions from staff, the Board has added two additional conditions to this rezoning. The first is adopt a minimum panel height of 28 inches from the bottom of the panel to the ground per the recommendations of Lynn County NRCS. The second condition is change the minimum required setback from non-participating occupied structures from 300 feet unless waived by the non-participating property owner to 1,250 feet, of which 950 feet can be waived by the non-participating property owner. And before you get into your deliberation, I wanted to touch on three things briefly. The first is panel location, the second is decommissioning plan salvage value, and the third is the vegetative buffer. So there were comments made last meeting that some of these solar panels have shifted their location from the site plan originally submitted. This is the original site plan submitted by Clonera regarding the panel locations. Clonera showed this map for their vegetative buffer at our last meeting, and some of the panels have changed. So the areas I circled in yellow on this map is where panels initially were in their first site plan, and then areas I circled in light blue here are where panels have been added. These changes were the result of a condition from NRCS staff about avoiding seasonal drainage ways. So the applicant has moved the solar panels from portions of the rezoning project to other portions of the rezoning project to avoid drainage ways. The location of the panels still meet all other staff conditions, including the original 300-foot setback. On the decommissioning plan, I touched on this last time, but I wanted to go over it again. The estimated decommissioning costs for this project are just under 2.7 million. Currently, there is a decommissioning performance bond of 1 million. The current salvage value is estimated at 9.7 million. Recycling costs and salvage value are reviewed every two years by a licensed professional, and the decommissioning plan and bond are updated annually. The majority of jurisdictions allow salvage value to count towards decommissioning costs, but not all jurisdictions do. New Hampshire, North Dakota, and Vermont exclude salvage value in decommissioning cost estimates. The Bureau of Land Management, which has permitted 37 utility-scale solar projects totaling 7,000 megawatts, also does not allow salvage value in decommissioning cost estimates. Clonera's decommissioning plan in the Wiesek County also did not allow salvage value, although the decommissioning cost was a bit lower at just over 1.7 million. It is staff's opinion that not including salvage value in the decommissioning plan is a reasonable request for the county to make and would help ensure sufficient funds would be available to return the site to agricultural production in the future. On vegetative screening, the applicant has proposed, in addition to the 300-foot setback, vegetative screening to be used for a minimum of 1,000 feet along the perimeter fence of adjacent properties. This is the exact language they have proposed in their presentation from our last meeting. I am going to recommend, if the Board wants to take them up on their vegetative screening proposal, that it do so by a motion tonight. So that language that they propose reads as such. Vegetative screening shall be used for a minimum of 1,000 feet along the perimeter fence adjacent to any occupied residences within 1,000 feet at the project boundary. Screening shall consist of evergreen or shrub species with preference given to native species that will be a minimum of six feet in height at the time of planting and have a projected growth rate of a minimum of six inches per year spaced no greater than 12 feet apart measured on center. Screening would be maintained at a height of eight feet or greater for the duration of the project and shall be replaced upon death or disease. Now, also from the applicant's presentation last week and from the specs on their racking system, the maximum height of the panels at their full tilt would be 13 feet. Therefore, in staff's opinion, if you do go with the vegetative screening, staff is recommending that the screening be maintained to a minimum height of 13 feet that is in line with the maximum height of the panels, and also increasing the minimum height at the time of planting from six feet to eight feet. So the Board has a set of options available to them at this third and final reading, or a set of actions. One action that can be taken is a motion to either remove or add conditions, and staff would recommend that each motion be done separately for each condition either removed or added. The Board can have a motion to approve the proposal subject to conditions, a motion to deny the proposal, or a motion to table the proposal for additional review or information And I'd also ask the Board to keep in mind these standards for approval when making their decision. At this point, I'd be happy to take any questions from the Board on anything I've presented or on anything you would like to know more about.
I'll defer to my colleagues. Supervisor Zomba? I think you're on.
Okay, I guess I'm on. Speakers must be mounted differently because it sounds a lot different in the last two, three meetings. Yeah, it is. My first question's on decommissioning. So if we weren't to take, if we were not to take salvage value, which I would be in favor of not taking that, what would the bond look like?
The bond would be about 2.7 million, an increase from the 1 million it is now.
And what?
It would increase from the 1 million it is now to 2.7 million.
And then it would still be reevaluated every?
Yes.
Well, talk us through it again.
Yes, so the bond would be reevaluated every year as with, there's an inflation factor built in, and then the cost of decommissioning would be reevaluated each year. We would still have every year the recycling costs reevaluated. We would not need to reevaluate salvage value on a two-year basis because we wouldn't be using it, but it would still be evaluated to make sure it's in line with industry standards and expected costs for decommissioning.
So if we have a $2.7 million bond in year seven, whatever year you want to pick, decommissionings then $5 million, then they would have to increase the bond?
The bond would increase every year, yes.
Okay. I guess that answers that question. I didn't follow your vegetative screening, so you're recommending it goes to eight foot?
I'm recommending the minimum height when they plant the screening be eight feet, and the minimum height at the mature growth of the screening be 13 feet, which is the maximum height of the panels when they are at their full tilt.
Okay. I think that's probably all my questions for right now. Have you got one? Do you got some?
Great questions. Appreciate you ask them. Supervisor Walker, anything?
The questions I had were about decommissioning.
The questions I had were about decommissioning, and they were answered in Charlie's presentation. The other question I have is not necessarily for Charlie, it's for the applicant, but it has to do with a particular request received by some concerned residents about language that would be more specific detailing the obligations of the applicant if solar panel arrays were to fly into neighboring yards or property due to extreme weather events. And I think some of the language we've read stipulates that the applicant will acknowledge within 72 hours that this has happened, but I think some of the residents were hoping there'd be more spelled-out language acknowledging that the applicant would help remove the solar arrays that may be blown into someone's property, or at the very least work with their insurance to mitigate anything like that. So that question I have for the applicant, but the other questions I had were answered by Charlie's presentation. Thank you very much for that. I don't know if the applicant has anything left to address, and if not, that's okay too.
Hello, good evening.
Hi, Jared.
So I believe the specific language outlines that we have 72 hours to essentially come to the property and assess and then put together a plan. We wanted to keep that language because not knowing the full extent of what it's going to be, it's hard to make any sort of commitments to, you know, we're going to have it cleaned up by this time or this time because I don't know. We would absolutely get there. We would make a plan within the 72 hours, and then, you know, we've already agreed that that would be our intent, is that we would be, you know, helping to clean up any panels that would be on any adjacent property. So, I mean, is there anything specific outside of that that you want to go into?
I, for the record, I wasn't looking for, sorry about this. I wasn't, I appreciate that response. I wasn't looking for a particular sort of hard and fast deadline for when action in terms of the cleanup would take, because as you suggested, it could be an instance where you have to make a plan, and it might be a week or so.
Right.
Or the property owner may want you to work with an insurance company. So if the language allows for more than just an acknowledgement that debris has entered into someone's property, but that the applicant will both acknowledge that this happened and work with the property owner to develop a plan for its removal or disposition or whatever it is, then that seems sufficient to me.
Yeah, we can look at that language.
Supervisor, related to that question, I wanted to read off one of our conditions in our staff report. Coggin Solar LLC or the current owner of the project will be responsible for the cleanup of debris related to storm damage. The project owner shall have a representative onsite to assess and acknowledge the presence, the presence of debris and the responsibility for cleanup within 72 hours of the storm event. So we do have a condition which assigns responsibility for cleanup of the debris to the owner of the site. We do give a timeline for them to be onsite, acknowledge the responsibility to clean up, and come up with a plan, but we do not have a hard timeline for cleanup for the reasons mentioned by the applicant.
That makes sense. Excellent. Thank you very much for that report. Can you hear me in the back with this microphone? Is it intelligent? Okay.
Ben, I'm hearing the people that are on the phones can't hear possibly?
Okay. Supervisor Zomba was just uplifting that there may be some challenges of those participating via, our audiovisual might be having difficulty understanding us, hearing us. We'll let the company figure that out. I don't know how to fix that on the fly. But since everyone can hear, thank you very much, Mr. McKee, for your presentation, Charlie. Appreciate you uplifting and clarifying the NRCS recommendations on the changing some of the panels out of drainage, seasonal drainage areas. So now I think we get to the meat and potatoes of the many different meetings we've had, which is third and final consideration. As Charlie uplifted, the Board does have a variety of different options in front of us. We can either remove conditions that were previously placed on there, add other conditions such as vegetative buffer, and then there was discussion about salvage value of the decommissioning costs. So just so everyone's aware, once we approve third and final, it then goes to be published, and once an ordinance is formally published in the paper, it becomes effective. Is that about right, Becky?
Unless it states otherwise.
Unless it states otherwise. So the actions here still need to be published, and we'll go from there. So the first order business then is a recap. A couple Mondays ago, there were several conditions placed on the applicant of increasing the staff-recommended setback of 300 feet to 1,250 feet. There was also a condition to increase the panel height from the staff-recommended 18 inches to 28 inches. So those are the two conditions that currently exist, and we did hear, again, meetings ago, the business case and rationale for the 300-foot setback versus the 1,250, which is already established in Iowa law for confined animal feeding operations. So we've had a lot of discussion about the merits of a 1,250-foot setback. We've heard from our staff about how when we first started this project, the setback was at 50 feet, and that the agreed-upon and recommended-upon setback is not out-of-line. In fact, it's, as the applicant and our staff said, is a little higher than norm, but not outside the bounds, let's say, as an editorial comment of, let's say, 1,250. So I'm prepared right now to make a motion to remove the 1,250-foot minimum setback distance back to the original 300 feet, which staff previously recommended. Is there a second so we can discuss?
Second.
Excellent. So there's a motion and a second. What this motion would do is, it would be as if we were at first consideration with 300 feet without any conditions. This would remove the condition, and setback would, minimum setback would be at 300. Is there any discussion on this topic, Supervisor Zomba?
Yeah, I'd propose that we not change it back. The 1,250 actually had a 950 soft, if we remember, and the purpose of that was to let non-participating homeowners participate in salvaging some value for their, or trying to limit loss of value for their home. I think we've had enough emails and people coming to our meetings acknowledging that that is taking place, that the groups have gotten together. I don't know that if Clonera's been part of it, but I've been emailed that they have been, and that it was actually, they're making progress and working on that. And so I don't know why we'd want to change it if it's all going to work out in the end, although they probably do need a little more time yet from what I understand, but...
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. I do know that there have been a group of citizens who have been meeting to really try and ensure that there is some kind of either healing taking place now and in the future, or at least try to come to some consensus among non-leased landowners versus those who are leasing or have sold their property. Again, I don't know if the applicants have been asked to be in that, or if they, if there is a reason for them to be in it. All I know is that it's not really our purview to try and act as a conduit between the affected landowners and the applicant. They should just be able to do that by themselves without having the Board of Supervisors trying to...
And I have not participated in any of that, and to my knowledge, you two haven't either.
No, I have not. The reason I bring that up for the public is, is that all these conversations are happening not with the Board, not with our staff, not with the applicant, and it's not part of some of the objective criteria that we would even score or rank or that we would use as an approval method. So I applaud that they're meeting. I just don't know what they're meeting, what the goal is, because it hasn't been shared with us.
Well, they did offer that, and I think the goal is that the community accepts this better, and it still fits within the footprint from what I understand. So it does not change the footprint, and it would alleviate the homeowners around it from feeling pressured that their values will be dropping, and we do represent those people. And setbacks is fully within our ability to decide, so I guess I don't understand where, I mean, I can accept the fact that you don't like that anymore, you don't want to do it, I can accept that fact, but not that it's not within our purview to do it.
No, and I think you bring up a very, a great point. I'm not putting, I'm not minimizing the efforts done by others to try and make this something that the community understands, likes, whatever adjective you want to use. I just don't know, in this decision-making process, its place. Now that we're at third and final, I haven't seen a proposal from the group. I've reached out to, their members reached out to me, I reached out to them. I just don't know what it is our role to codify whatever their agreement is if it doesn't involve the applicant. See what I'm saying?
Not exactly, because we're doing exactly what I thought, what I think you're saying. We're not getting involved in their negotiations, which we haven't been. We are simply setting a soft setback that we, that we had decided would be 1,250 fit, 300 firm, 950 negotiable. And the idea of that was not to stop this project, it was to give some property value reassurance to the people that live around it, and I think that they've done, done well at that, and I think we probably all just received an email from a gentleman, or at least, I mean, I got it right before I walked in, so whether you've seen it or not, John Krasaskierd.
Zakrasik.
Yes, that I believe, he led me to believe that Clonera was probably aware of it. But that's going by that email that just came in tonight, and he's in California according to email. So I guess if it's all working out, I don't know why we'd be hell-bent to change it.
So I want to jump in if I can, and to applaud any residents that are working as a group and working with the applicant. I think that's admirable work. I don't think that work needs to impede this process of whether or not we are going to approve or not approve. I don't think this Board needs to be put into a position to compel an applicant to do X, Y, or Z so that it meets, so that it, so that it provides, I guess, leverage for these outside meetings. I don't think that's really the place. But furthermore, if you just look at the condition Supervisor Zomba, that you put forth with this 1,250 setback, we have heard not only from our experts in planning and development, we have seen research that shows other projects, like projects around the country, that our setbacks are less than where we started and where we initially came to at 300 feet after this project got rolling. And then we've heard the reason being behind why differing setbacks were set for different projects. With confined animal feeding operations, it's set for a reason that's specific to CAFOs. With wind projects, except for a reason that's specific to wind projects, those conditions that matter for those projects don't matter for this project or for solar arrays. And so my objection to it, and I said this in the beginning, when I suggested we ask our staff and ask the applicant, instead of making it a condition, how this might alter and impact the project. And the feedback we received from both our staff and the applicant was that it would have a negative impact on the project going forward, and it could expand the footprint of the project altogether. So my objection is, is objective in nature. It's, the number proposed does not match the data that's out there with existing projects, the reasoning behind it. I think Supervisor Zomba, you admitted when you first proposed the condition that you took it because that was the setback for CAFOs out of Iowa law. You said that.
I did, it's on the books in Iowa.
Right.
That's a whole lot better leg to stand on than it come out of nowhere.
Well, it's not, these numbers aren't coming out of nowhere, and as my earlier point, this isn't a CAFO, so you are effectively comparing apples to oranges here because the setback for CAFOs were set for a reason.
I'm, I'm...
That has to do with having so many animals in a space and the waste that they produce and the smell. We're not producing waste here. It doesn't smell, and so I don't know why those conditions would factor in to the setback. That's the point, that's my objection.
Well, I suppose you and I can argue this all night long, or it sounds like it's going to pass two to one, so we might as well move on, but a nuisance is a nuisance, and you know, it's in the eye of the beholder.
If we've exhausted discussion, then I'll call for the vote. And again, the motion is to remove the 1,250 setback distance back to the 300 feet which staff had previously recommended. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes two to one. Since that condition was removed, it seems appropriate, and I'll make the motion to remove the panel height, the condition of the panel height from 28 inches back to 18 inches with staff, which staff previously recommended. Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Discussion.
Well, there again, I'm going back with our staff at the NRCS office. Mr. John Gallagher recommended 28 inches. I believe that Charlie Nichols, our head of planning and development, also was okay with that at one, at one time. Is that true? That you, that you were okay with it at one time? I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth.
Yes, there was a comment from NRCS staff on the staff report that they recommended a 28-inch panel height. Planning and development did second the recommendation. Planning and development also did recommend approval with the 18-inch panel height, keeping in mind that NRCS did want the increased panel height for a greater chance that a diverse seed mix would, would take hold over the life of the project.
So there again, I'd be against removing that condition.
Okay. And thank you very much for those comments. Supervisor Walker, anything?
Sure, yeah. I, after reading John's report, I didn't get to it as soon as he sent it. I don't know if it was heading into the weekend or not, but after reading his report, I came prepared to our next meeting with questions, and I believe my questions were answered by the applicant in their response. And I want to focus on a few, a few issues that I have here. I think the chief concern with respect to the panel height was for soil health and for protecting the native prairie that could be grown underneath the panel height. And so that was my primary concern, and I made that very clear to the applicant. After hearing their presentation and noting that over 50% of the time, the panels would be in a position at an appropriate height to allow for those growth, and then hearing, I think I remember asking the question, "Well, don't tell me about projects you have in, you know, the south, southwest, or in parts of the United States that are unlike Iowa. Tell me about projects you have that are very similar. And what issues, if any, do you have with soil health or, or growth, or vegetation growth?" And the answer was, "We don't have any issues." And it is because the panel heights allow, allow for that growth and allow for that soil health. So I'm, the other, the other point I'll make is, and I think the applicant pointed this out, I'm not sure how comprehensive that memo was that we received insofar as the number of solar, utility-scale solar projects that were analyzed. I think it was three, and I'm also not sure how many of those out of the three used similar technology here, whether the panels were moving or whether they were fixed. And so I think those are important considerations, and they were considerations that I think were addressed in our next public meeting on the topic.
Thank you for that. We have had a lot of discussion on the panel height, which, you know, you might think, what is 10 inches from 18 to 28? But I think the applicant did make a good business case that... But I think the applicant did make a good business case that around 15% of the time, it would be at that 18 inches, and everything else, it would be over that as a, the way that it's constructed. So we, there is a motion on the floor to, again, go back to, remove the 28 inches back to the 18 inches with staff had previously recommended. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes two to one. At the suggestion of, I think, the applicant, as well as what was presented here tonight, I'm going to make the motion to add a condition regarding a vegetative buffer. And Becky, I'll give this to you, so you have it in full detail. It's "The vegetative screening shall be used for a minimum of 1,000 feet along the perimeter fence adjacent to any occupied residence within 1,000 feet of the project boundary. Screening shall consist of evergreen or shrub species, with preference given to native species, that will be a minimum of eight feet in height at the time of planting, and have a projected growth rate of a minimum of six inches per year, and spaced no greater than 12 feet apart, measured on center. Screening would be maintained to a height of 13 feet or greater for the duration of the project and shall be replaced upon death or disease." Is there a motion? I'll make that motion to approve this language. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Is that the language coming from planning zoning, or from Clonera?
I just made it up.
I don't doubt that.
No, it came from planning and zoning. It's the language that I think even the applicant suggested, that Charlie had uplifted earlier, and maybe it's been with other projects.
He had both of them up there.
Yeah, there you go.
The language was suggested by the applicant. Staff did suggest two changes, which were included in your summary, increasing the minimum height of the mature growth to 13 feet to be in line with the maximum height of the panels, and increasing the height when they are first installed from six feet to eight feet. But otherwise, the language was that proposed by the applicant of the 1,000-foot vegetative screening for adjacent residences.
Okay. Any other, do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of this condition signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes unanimously. Last is a motion to require as a condition that the salvage value shall not be used in the decommissioning plan costs. This would be an additional requirement. I'll make that motion, so we can have a, and I'll seek a second so we can have a discussion.
Second.
Thank you for that Supervisor Zomba. It's been moved and seconded, as we've had a lot of discussion and a lot of interest on, and a lot of feedback on the proposed salvage value. We've gone back and forth, again, we're trying to speculate decades into the future about the salvage costs. It appears through what was presented tonight that certain projects, you know, projects do use salvage value and some don't. But I think in order to ensure the greatest potential for taxpayers not being on the hook for this is to not require the salvage value, and instead require the performance bond to be around the 2.68 million. And then as our staff have alluded to, every couple of years, there'll be meetings in which they'll discuss whether that, you know, that needs to be increased, as well as other inflationary increases. Do I have that rough? Okay. So it has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion unanimously carries. So now I think we get to the part where we have now removed two of the conditions back to what staff had previously recommended. We've added the language on the vegetative buffer and the conditions on the decommissioning plan. So I think our last order of business is now to vote on third and final as...
I got a motion. Or I don't want to talk about one motion anyway.
Okay.
I guess we have to have a motion in order to talk about it, if you want to do Robert's rule orders correctly. So my motion would be to address property values similar to how we did, or how the county did around the Solid Waste Agency and quarries in the past.
Could you repeat that just one more time?
A motion to address property values, or devaluation, similar to what was done at the Solid Waste Agency and quarries in the past.
I will second the motion for sake of discussion, and just, if I may, Mr. Chair, ask for greater clarification. Oh, were you not done?
No, I'm done. I'm going to ask Charlie to come up and speak to that.
Okay.
If you're done.
Yeah, I was just asking you to clarify.
The sound in here is really different than last time.
Yeah, what we're getting at here.
Did you want me to expound on that property value protection plan?
Yes.
Sure. So what we've used in the past, and I believe I went over this briefly last meeting, for quarries is a property value protection plan whereby, when the quarry was completed, they did a baseline appraisal of properties to get a value, and then, at some point in the future, if a homeowner went to sell their home and they felt like the quarry had negatively affected their property value, they could get another appraisal done. And if it was found that, yes, the property value had been affected, then the quarry would make up that difference. The quarry did have a chance to appeal. If they felt like the value was too much, they could hire their own appraiser, and if that appraiser found a different value, they would split the difference and the quarry would make up that difference. So that has been something used for quarries in the past. It was also used for the landfill, I believe. I'm sure the applicant has comments they'd like to make on that as well. Do you have any questions for me, though, while I'm up here?
No.
Thanks, Charlie. Any other questions, or do we want, did you want to invite up the applicant for a response, Louis? I don't know if they have.
If you'd like to, that's great. Jared?
Good evening again. I find that we're, again, we're in a position where we are comparing something to something else that is inherently different. This is not a quarry. This is not a waste management center. And so finding solutions on things that are inherently very, very different, or financed in very, very different ways, propose potential issues and problems with this project. Without getting into the nitty-gritty details of how a solar project is financed, when we have liabilities on a project that are unknown, it is very difficult for a solar project that is financed in the way that it's financed. This is not a proposal that Clonera would be amenable to. It proposes very, it proposes stipulations on a project based on other projects that are inherently very different. I had another thought, but it left me. Do you have any questions for me?
Do any of my colleagues, while Jared's up?
I don't have any more questions for you, no. I do find it fascinating that the unknown for you of the value of a person's property, you would almost say that that would be a deal breaker, but you're more than, you've often said that there is no devaluation, so if that's true, this shouldn't bother you at all. But you're certainly fine with leaving the unknown upon the property owner.
We can differ in that opinion. No problem.
Anything else for Jared?
No, thank you.
Okay, Professor McKee. Anything else, Louis?
No, I have a statement when we're all done, but I'd like time to read.
Yeah, sure. I will say, I was interested in property value protection, and I remain interested in property value protection. One thing that I think is important to remember, and I do think it was actually acknowledged, perhaps in our last meeting, is that there are, there's a lot of research out there that points to the fact that solar panel, or solar farms have no impact on property values, and then there's the other side of it that says it does. And so with this particular method, I'm uncomfortable moving forward, because I'm not sure, and maybe Louis, you have it, but I think the measures with which you determine whether or not property value is being impacted, would really need to be spelled out, because I think it's really easy for someone to find, it would be really easy for someone to find an appraiser, to use one methodology to get the result that they want, and so on and so forth. So those are details that I think you'd have to really kind of work through before I'd be prepared to carte blanche support this, support this motion.
Well, I'm more than willing to give you the time, if you'd like.
I'm sure you are.
There, first of all, a lot of great discussion, and I do see your point Supervisor Zomba. I don't know how, just, again, we're kind of doing a lot of this on the fly. We hadn't had a lot of robust discussion on what that actually looks like, and it is true that several quarries, and at the Solid Waste Agency, those organizations entered into some property value protections. And I get it, living next to a quarry where you have that amount of traffic per day, living next to a Solid Waste Agency, in which you have commercial vehicles, you have private haulers, and you have residential vehicles, five days a week, plus, I'm sorry, reduced hours on the weekends, can, to Mr. McKee's point, it is a different project, it is a different industry, it is a different entity that entered into those type of negotiations with the property owners because of the increased traffic, the increased noise, the dust from a quarry, you know, the smell from a Solid Waste Agency. Those just happen to be different than a solar array.
This is, I remember once arguing, well, I wasn't arguing, with some people that I worked with, arguing over hauling logs. I know, I'm going somewhere with this, you guys. And they argued for quite a while on changing a law about hauling logs. But at the end of the day, logs, if you're, 80,000 pounds is what the legal limit is, it doesn't matter if you're hauling logs, hogs, corn, milk, take your pick. 80,000 pounds is 80,000 pounds. We have a similar situation here. It doesn't matter what the nuisance is, it's a nuisance. But in this case, where we've been told by the applicant that there is no property value loss, I cannot believe that they have a problem with guaranteeing property value, because they're adamant there is no loss. So this is something that the county's done before, they know how to do it, they've done it at least on two occasions, probably more, but two that I'm aware of. And I just see it as being a non-issue that we should support that. I mean, we certainly don't, we represent the people yet. We don't represent Clonera, and it seems to me that, that you're bending over backwards for the applicant, and it makes no sense. It's absolutely no sense to me. But in this case, where the applicant is adamant that there is no loss, it won't cost them a dime if they're true, if they're right.
Supervisor Zomba, you mentioned whether you're hauling logs, or milk, or anything else, it's, you know, you went on to say if it's a nuisance, it's a nuisance. But the reason why I do have an issue comparing apples to oranges, is because I don't think anybody here in this room would say that it's, we should be legislating as if we're talking about hauling milk, when we may be hauling something else. Radioactive material, nitrogen gas, I mean, you can't always find one example.
No, we don't have any examples, Stacy. That's the problem. There's one industrial solar plant in Iowa, it's down at Wapalo, it's on, it's flat, I'll grant you that, it's pretty porous soil, I'll grant you that. But we have nothing to go back on to compare to. And that's part of the problem with this whole process, and shooting from the hip. We don't have anything to base it off of, really. So this is a simple motion that would address property values, that appears, if you take the applicant's word, would not affect them, because they've been adamant that there is no value loss. I don't personally see it that way, so this protects our constituents. And like, just like the other motions, I guess we can argue till we're blue in the face, or we can move forward.
We do, we do have examples of industrial-scale solar across the country, and so we do have like projects to compare this with. So it is not necessarily the case, because there are few in Iowa, that we can't get a good idea of what it might look like. And that is why, since those examples exist, which is where we take recommendations from with things like setbacks, since those examples exist, those should be more of a baseline than comparing apples to oranges. So it's, it's a clever turn of phrase that you've been using, but we do have examples of which to compare this project against in the Midwest.
Any other discussion? No? Do CAFO, just out of curiosity, do CAFO owners provide property value protection for their neighbors?
That's what the 1,250 feet is for, I recommend.
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And I will just take issue just that we're bending over backwards. We've sat in these meetings, we've listened to every single person who's emailed us, come talk to us, you know, I may be looking at this through a very different lens. I'm not a farmer. I live in the city. I do look at this from a different lens, but I also have a, I also am looking that we can chew gum and walk at the same time, that we can be the ethanol leader and be a new leader in renewable energy. We have 351,000 acres of agriculturally-zoned acres in Lynn County, outside of municipalities. 351,000. I think we can produce ethanol and have 750 acres of a solar field, which is point 002, not point 2.
This has nothing to do with producing ethanol, it's simply trying to protect someone's property value.
I get it. I appreciate it. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay, it fails one to two. So, we have done the setback, the panel height, the vegetative management, the salvage. Is there anything else Supervisor Zomba? Okay. So this is now the point where we would vote on third and final, as it has been presented here, in terms of motions and seconds on removal and additions of different conditions. So I will make the motion to approve third and final. Is there a second?
I will second, for sake of discussion.
Any other discussion? Certainly Supervisor Zomba, do you have any last words? Supervisor Walker?
Yeah, I do, actually. As I've stated before in the past, I'd like to appreciate all of the input and citizen feedback we've received. This process has proven to be a tedious one. However, I do feel like this board has evaluated the process, or the project, rather, based on comprehensive, objective measures. And I think this project has become better by the process with which it was put through. I do want to expand on a point that Supervisor Rogers was making, and it's that every elected legislative body is going to be tested with certain issues that may end up being controversial. But I too take a little bit of umbrage at the fact that because we may be approaching this from a different lens, we are either bending over backwards, or we're not representing the interests of the people. We all got into public service to represent the interests of the people, all of us, every single one of us on this elected body, got in, got into public service to represent the interests of the people. And throughout the process, there've been a lot of folks who are opposed to this project, who have made it a point to, I would say, try to implicate my intelligence, the intelligence of my colleagues, people charged us of not having common sense, people of charge in, making accusations of us being in the bag of business, or of organized labor. And I get it, I've been on the, I've been on the losing end on many of arguments throughout my life, and I can assure you, this community doesn't see the world in the way that I see it. And I've had a lot of people tell me otherwise, but I can assure those folks who may be unhappy with this situation, that my colleagues, even the ones that disagree with me, put a lot of time and effort into every decision we make, and particularly the ones that tend to stir up the public in the way this has done. So, believe me or not, I'm telling you, I know the hearts of the people I serve with, and I think this project has not only been stressful, but has been instructive, an instructive tool to remind us why we got into this, and that is to do the best we can with what we have, and to make the best decisions with the information we have, and with our... the information we have and with our core beliefs, uh, driving all of it. So, um, those would be my comments prior to the vote.
Appreciate your, your comments and, and, uh, the discussions we've had here. We are a three-member board who, who oftentimes have to make complicated, um, let me try this one, that make complicated, uh, decisions that nobody, uh, maybe not all parties are happy with, or that we couldn't achieve a win-win. But we certainly, I think, have not been operating here from a zero-sum game, that only one can win and no one else can. That, I think, the fact that we've, this is probably now hour fifteen of the meetings that we've been in to ensure that everyone gets heard, everyone gets listened to, um, that we really understand the impact that this can have, positive or negative, goes to what, you know, we take this job seriously. We are also in districts. So we do, Supervisor Walker is elected by a district that's not in here, I'm not, my district is elsewhere. You represent literally every corner of the rural, um, parts of, of, of the county and, and, and so we do come at this with a lens, uh, we look at it through our, our lived experiences, we look at it through our, uh, how we, we, we see the future. And I'm not saying that one idea is better than the other or worse than, they're just different. They're just different. And this has, this issue by itself has really raised the, the critical question of what is it that we want to leave behind for future generations? And I know for many in this room, it's maybe the farm that was left to them. There's also other people in this room for whom they did enter into contracts. They do want this as their type of farming. And farming has changed. It certainly has changed since this, you know, was, used to be prairie, and then it was cultivated into row crops. This is kind of the next evolution of farming in Iowa. Some like that and some don't. And it's oftentimes left to boards like ours to have to figure this out. And we may not get it perfect. We're trying to get to a place where people feel that if, if, if they're against it, that at least there were some concessions made, and if they're for it, that it, 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 it'll help Iowa become a, a renewable energy expert, or, or, uh, a renewable energy leader in this space. So I'm, I do appreciate that this is, and, and I can understand, this is going to make some people very upset. And likewise, it's going to make some people, um, excited. I said that at our first meeting, it's done both. This issue has brought out both. And, and it's, it's been quite the challenge. So I know that we have, do you, you look like you've got something else.
Well, I'm a, as long as we're all making our statements, I might as well give mine before we vote.
Sure.
But I'll wait till you're done, though.
No, I just, I, I do want to just thank, from a deep bow of gratitude to many of the people here that I've, that have shared with me, whether it was at the Robinson's house, at their, at their table, or it's Steve Mason coming up to me after meetings, or it's Greg Bickel, or others who are very passionately trying to, to save what is theirs and letting us know the impact of their life story. It's, it is a rare privilege in this profession. It's the thing that people really don't get to see. Uh, they just, they see us making decisions. What they don't see is us going into people's living rooms, or listening to the stories of how they were, were raised, and the legacy that they want to leave for their, their children, and what they're doing to, to, to do that. There was an individual here who sent us a very moving, very moving email about their life story. And, and, and I, I want to thank that person from the bottom of my heart, that this is, this has really opened, I think, a lot of us up. And again, as I said, for some, like Laura Robinson has said, this has caused her to lose sleep. And for others, it is fractured relationships and friendships. It is divided communities, um, in ways that natural disasters and, and farm crises and others haven't really tested us. This has been a, a very challenging test, and one that we'll know in the future whether or not this was a great idea or not. We don't have the crystal ball in front of us right now to say this decision will be or won't be. We'll only have the benefit of, of hindsight. But I want to, I want to thank the citizens who have taken the challenge of being present or making themselves known and heard to help inform our decision-making. That is democracy at its purest. And oftentimes, I don't think we take enough time to pause and reflect on just really how amazing of a process that part is. So I do wish to thank the citizens for being actively engaged, for challenging assumptions, for pushing, uh, for your interests and that of your community. So Supervisor Zamba, if you want to finish up?
Yeah, I was going to make this after we vote, but I might as well do it now, so. Although I'm a staunch supporter of private property rights, I believe the reasons to vote no far outweigh the reasons to be in favor of it this time. And I'm obviously disappointed in the project moving forward without many of the amendments proposed. However, Clanera, and specifically you, Jared, uh, you did promise to work with the affected residents after the vote. And so I'll look forward to receiving updates from Clanera and the affected property owners on the progress as this project moves forward. And I've got one little saying that, uh, it's actually about buying products, but it does fit, uh, if you change a few of the words for legislation or, or ordinances. It comes from Mr. M.L. Letty, and it's simply, "The bitterness of poor quality is remembered long after the sweetness of the low price is forgotten."
Okay. Anything else? So again, this is to approve third and final with the conditions we've removed, as well as conditions that have been added. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
The motion passes two to one. We now move, uh, from third and final to public comment. And this is the opportunity for the public to address the board. You'll have five minutes. If you wish, the microphone and podium is there. And I will set my iPad for anyone who wants to speak. Greg Gertis, good evening. I'm Peachey, how are you?
I cannot meet that adjective.
Okay.
Greg Gertis, Iowa City, Iowa, attorney representing the Robinson family. I trust that you can hear me, uh, the acoustics are different.
I think it's more for the audience, yeah, you might just have to Greg.
The acu, the acoustics are quite different. Several things. First, as I understand it, you have removed two conditions and you've added two different conditions. If I follow that correctly, what you have just had is the first reading of the final version of your ordinance. So we've got two more readings. If you want to push it, that's up to you. I suggest you consult with your attorney, because, uh, as we pursue our options, that certainly is, um, a part of the process. Secondly, you've now got what appears to be a new site plan, which is materially different than the one that was originally proposed. That is also contrary to your zoning ordinance. It needs to go back to the beginning with the new site plan. This, uh, comment is directed to the east side of the table. Both of you mentioned that, uh, I think that's east, isn't it? Both of you mentioned that, um, uh, you were hesitant to get involved in negotiations between, uh, private parties. I would point out that the two of you did exactly that when you insisted that a project labor agreement, which requires the contractor to pay union-scale wages, is exactly getting involved in private negotiations. It also has the very substantial effect of increasing the cost of the project and the resulting electricity that the consumers are end, are going to end up paying. Third point, um, please make sure that your bond covers all of the obligations of the applicant and not just decommissioning. Again, discussion was had tonight about storm damage removal. Your bond has to cover that, or the project owner is probably going to walk away, rather than try to repair or remove millions and millions of dollars of damaged solar panels. Lastly, I want you, as you go forward, because you're probably right, this isn't the first solar application that's going to come across your desk, is to consider the different options that you have. For example, those big windmills out there, they produce around three megawatts each. And each of them sits on about three acres of land. So if you do your math, the hundred megawatts that this facility generates on seven hundred acres could be generated on one hundred acres using windmills. So if for some reason you insist upon using prime farmland to generate electricity, at least mitigate the amount of farmland you need to ruin by using windmills rather than solar panels, they use up and destroy far less farmland than what you have seen fit to do here tonight. Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to meet with you throughout this process. I appreciate the frank civility. And, um, we shall go forward from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gertis. This is still public comment?
Good evening, um, honorable supervisors. I just wanted to say thank you, um, on behalf of Bright Future Iowa and four thousand and two residents of Lynn County who wanted you to move forward. Thank you for your leadership. And, um, this is Swati Dandakar. My address is twenty-seven thirty-one twenty-eighth Avenue, Marion, Iowa. Thank you.
Thank you, Ambassador. Other public comment? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Bill Gerhardt, and I'm president of the Iowa State Building and Construction Trades Council. I live in rural Johnson County, I'm an REC, Lynn County REC member. I want to thank the board of supervisors for voting to approve this project. For a lot of men and women that do construction work, this is going to be good jobs for them with, uh, health insurance, retirement, apprenticeship and training. For the community, it's going to be, uh, we're going to put us in the forefront of, 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 of clean energy. And, uh, for the environment, this is going to take a lot of the fossil fuel industry out of the picture and put us in, in a position to go forward. So thank you again.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Osterberg, good evening.
Good evening. My name is David Osterberg, I come from Mount Vernon, Iowa, and Louis is my, my supervisor. And I want to thank you also for passing this resolution. Nobody said recently that climate change is a reality, and this is a way of doing something about making it, making a response to, to climate change, which it is. So thank you, first of all, for that. And since I represent an environmental organization, Common Good Iowa, which is also part of a coalition that has come together with trade unions to call ourselves a blue-green kind of alliance, we want to make sure that we have good energy being produced. But we also want to see that energy being produced with good wages, a, making sure that health and safety are taken care of, that we have, uh, some way of making sure that new people come along through apprenticeships. All of those things are also part of this project. This is one of the best solar projects I've heard of, and again, thank you for doing that. That brings up another thing, which is also, this is great economic development, partly because of those good jobs, but for all of the other ancillary effects on the county. Fourth, it enhances income of farmers. And, uh, somehow we've been talking about how farmers can't like this, of course they like it. A whole number of them have decided to take their land and to, put it into a different kind of crop than they had before. And, uh, we shouldn't be denying them the right to do that. Also, speaking of farms and farmland, this protects farmland. It protects it probably better than making, making use of it with soybeans and corn, because there's going to be less effects on our water quality because of the kind of requirements that Charlie and his staff have done. This is going to be the kind of place that thirty-five years from now, if those panels come out, that farmland is going to be better than when it went into it. We are protecting farmland, we're not destroying it somehow. And, uh, I want to say to all the, the supervisors, whether they voted for or against, you guys have certainly done your job. You worked hard, you learned a lot, and I assume that that's going to be good for the next project that comes along, which Common Good Iowa also will probably be in charge of, as long as it has good jobs and the kind of power that is going to take on climate change, because we need to do that for sure. So thank you for your vote.
Thank you, David. Mike Carberry. Hi, Mike.
Good evening, supervisors, and thank you for your thoughtful discussion and for passing this. Iowa has been, long been a, a leader in renewable energy. We lead the country in wind energy and have for a number of years. We're also number one in ethanol, we're number one in biodiesel. And contrary to what was mentioned earlier, this is not the second solar farm that will be installed in this state. Prior to 2020, there were six solar farms, utility-sized solar farms already developed in the state, largest being in Western Dubuque County. And, uh, then that was before Clanera, uh, installed their Wapalo project. So this is showing leadership. And renewable energy isn't just wind, and it's not just biofuels. Solar is, you know, shining the way, showing a bright future, as our friend Swati Dandakar and her firm says. I applaud you for looking at these amendments. The vegetative screening one was wonderful. I suggested that you not plant saplings, which we've seen before, and that going from six foot to eight foot, that's wonderful. And the, the thirteen, and then the eighteen inches to twenty-eight inches, and then going back. You've discussed them, everything was very well done, I applaud that. The flaws that I had seen, one of them was the decommissioning. You fixed the holes in that, so to speak. I have been involved myself in four solar projects, utility-sized solar projects, and I was one of the founding members of the Iowa Solar Energy Trade Association. We've been through two derachos. I'm here to tell you that solar did very, very well during the derachos. There were very few broken panels, hardly anything had to be replaced because it held up to hundred and forty mile an hour winds, to hundred and twenty mile an hour winds. Solar is installed securely, it, there shouldn't be anything to worry about, but you've even addressed that, if that comes to pass. So again, I thank the Lynn County supervisors for showing leadership in this area, and I applaud you, and I thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
And what's your last name?
Carberry, C-A-R-B-E-R-R-Y. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Coleman Silbernagel, C-O-L-M-A-N. Silbernagel is S-I-L, B as in boy, E-R-N-A-G-E-L. My address is twenty-four ninety-one fifty-fifth Street in Vinson. Thank you supervisors for the opportunity to be here tonight, uh, and thank you for demonstrating just how important it is to participate in local elections. I think we've seen tonight just how important it is to vote. As a candidate for Senate District Forty-two, uh, I appreciate the demonstration that leadership matters and having the right leaders in place matters. Uh, we heard tonight that boards like these are going to determine the next generation of farming. I think that's a stunning thing to say, when, uh, you readily admit that you're not a farmer. To hear that the next generation of farming is steel and concrete that will forever scar the land is a phenomenal thing, as the son of a dairy farmer, uh, to hear. Uh, we heard that everyone was heard, and everyone was We heard that everyone was heard and everyone was listened to, and I'm sure that will be wonderful solace when people look out on a lattice of glass and steel. We heard tonight that the board doesn't have a purpose to compel companies. Then what does the purpose of this board have? We heard that financing difficulties are reasons to not pursue amendments. Sounds from quarries are reasons for actions. Smells from solid waste are reasons for actions. But sites from solar, just deal with it. And I would contend, lastly, that if climate change is the concern, Duane Arnold Energy Center generates six times the electricity on half the footprint. If we're concerned about climate change, we should pursue the best green option, and that is nuclear. Thank you very much.
Anyone else going once? Tracy? I know you wouldn't let an opportunity go by.
My name is Tracy Nelson. I live at 3311 Pleasant Creek Road, Paylow, Iowa. Regarding, first I'll speak about the recommendations for the distance. And this is a, no, actually it was a, anyway, I'll just go on. Regarding setbacks, pertaining to the plea for reasonable setbacks is not only for residents but for the property, to the property line. The threat of fire, which Clanera spokesman corrected me on to be .006, which comes out to be 21 fires per year instead of the 35 fires per year, per panel, per year. That my reference study, 21 panels fires per year might not seem much, but if you, your property is within 50 foot from that panel and it takes 10 to 15 minutes for the volunteer fire department to arrive, your farm buildings could all be engulfed by then and perhaps the home if it's a windy day. Clanera still has not made any plans to protect neighboring property and setbacks of at least 200 to 300 feet to the property line would be more adequate and 1250 feet to the house would give that protection along with less chance of being affected by runoff and heavy rains. Next, the value reports, which according to state law, the regulations shall be made with reasonable consideration, among other things, with a view to conserve the value of buildings. Three reports we've stated so far, and they have referenced all to conclude there would be little effect on diminished property values. Now I like to compare apples to apples, which you like to do. These reports combined thousands of small 1 to 10 to 20 watt facilities, mixed in with about 38 to 50 facilities that were over 70 watts. Of course, if you add them up, the average loss is going to be small. Now, if you combine 1,000 cranberries, jerrys and raspberries to a few apples in size, the average is going to be very small. Someone threw a cherry at your head, it was not going to affect you very much. Someone threw an apple at your head, that would hurt. That would, there would be an impact on that. So if you compare apples to apples, there's going to be a great impact. If you were to investigate just the large solar plants only and compare them, you'd find that there are much greater setbacks. And the ones that were close, which there are very few because they never build them that close, the impact is going to be much Last year, on May 25th, the first town hall meeting we had in Paylow, supervisors were there, two supervisors were there. Mr. Nichols was asked by Ashley Ramble how the county can truly hold a company that has deep pockets accountable for plans they provide. Mr. Nichols replied, "As far as keeping them accountable, it will involve a lot of due diligence, including verifying, verifying, which hasn't been done, and putting the information out to the public." The board was also asked who would provide experts on behalf of all the residents, knowing that the solar company will spend a lot of money to sell this. Mr. Rogers replied that their advocacy is something money cannot buy. They have to show up at meetings, make sure your elected officials know your stand on this. You elect people to make decisions on your behalf. Mr. Rogers, we have come to the meetings. We have made sure our elected officials know our stand on this. You've sold us out, just like the fathers who sell their young daughters and sons into slavery and prostitution just for the money to help support their family. Well, Lynn County does not need that money so bad they have to sell us out. I want to thank you so much, Mr. Zumba, for the only one who listened to the people.
Any other public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we're adjourned. Thank you.